Welcome everyone back. Call the planning board ready for meeting the board for July thirteenth. This town will stand in place of the students. I'm led to lead this is a flag in the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. I um I just want before we uh move forward on the agenda since our our new members have been installed. I was gonna say congratulations. Look forward to working with you for another three years. All right. We got any members in this? Let's see. Yeah, Mr. Phillips. So we need a motion to approve perhaps. No motion second. All in favor and to get the saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion care. Prove for this month. Next time on the agenda, item free approval of the agenda. Any corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Any motion to approve? I was in favor and get the same aye. Any opposed? Motion care. All right, item one before approval of minutes from our June eighth twenty twenty one meetings. These are in our packets for reviews. I do have one um edit on page two. Under item five, public hearing number one. Under the action item. Um let's see if make a motion, this Phillip second or Matt Madan. Town manager as only this this used in that paragraph in no other place. Should be. Or it needs to be used throughout the whole document. Is there any other? Questions, concerns, events?
I would say on page one, um everyone except for Mr. Avery should be removed from the others present.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, but I can't remember.
Cause they're listed on the public hearing. I. That's this section right here is for people who um.
Not love economy.
Right.
Individuals, this people like um the gentleman from the N W A C P, the presentation about trail.
But your other people are should be listed on your public hearing. So technically this is others present, which is the one to say none. And then you can add Mr. Avery in as the applicant that's speaking. And other people that's.
The track driver that spoke for your roots.
Now, this is the plan.
Yeah, cause then the body of the minutes. It's like a program down that speaks about Mr. Avery's addressing the board. And also has the seven fifty just who spoke against the man.
Did an awesome job keeping.
Yeah, there was a lot going on at that point in time. And I I got things out of order myself, so in in the meeting, so. Any other? Corrections or additions to the next? Chairman with all this. Hearing none, any motion to approve? Before we do, just I'm not used to seeing maybe because we don't get all the letters from.
Yeah.
Residents that are at the end of it.
They simply asked me to read into the records.
And we weren't at the meeting, but um yeah. Athena Jeff took turns reading the written statements that was submitted. So that's why I'm more attached. As far as that, I can see it. Exhibit A, if you will. Yep. You got it. Have motion to approve? Got a motion, second. I'm second, I was in favor and get the same aye. Any opposed? Motion care. Thank you everybody, that was uh heavy lifting the meeting. But yes. Yeah. We survived. All right. The no business. I've covered in the few papers. So we'll move to the old business, item A, discussion on administrative nine among.
So if you recall, uh the meeting before last, we introduced this issue. Um and we decided not to talk about it last meeting because we had such a packed agenda last meeting. So picking up on that discussion. As a reminder, a lot of the beginning of this memo is basically the same thing that we looked at in that May meeting. It's addressing the high priority item on the town's work plan, which says regarding article nine. Review of administrative variances and modifications and minor modifications. Uh and whether they can be more broadly applied. So uh the current ordinance allows for administrative variances. Uh and that allows for no more than ten percent of the required setback. Um so if the required setback was, for example, twenty feet, that administrative variance uh can reduce the setback no more than two feet. So it was down to eighteen feet. Uh which is helpful in some cases, but uh sometimes not really enough. And uh the town gets asked about it a lot. Uh similarly, uh the subdivision ordinance allows for modifications to an approved preliminary flat. Uh it says limited changes to an approved preliminary flat may be approved by a town administrator. Uh whereas significant changes included would not limit to increase in unit density. Any increase in area or change in configuration of open space, change in use of open space. Reduction in landscape or screen screening buffers, elimination of sidewalks, change in street dedication. Alteration, street interconnectivity shall be resubmitted for review and approval as a new application. So it has something really similar to administrative variances that are in article nine. Uh for now, we're going to focus on the administrative variances in article nine. And maybe eventually uh those modifications related to subdivision ordinance would be addressed at a later date. So like I mentioned, uh in the May meeting. The town has seen in the past uh applications that are barely outside of the town's requirements. So I give the example. Um someone in our ten district has a front yard setback of twenty six feet, whereas their ordinance requires thirty feet. And that ten percent variance will only give up to three feet. So that could get them down to the requirement of twenty seven feet versus twenty six feet. Long story short, they they still won't meet the ordinance. So and typically in the past, the only other option would be for that, we can show a platform of variance. I gave another example of building height, like if someone wanted to build a fifty one foot tall building. Uh whereas the ordinance only allows up to fifty, that's another question that's gets brought up a lot. We did talk about that in May a little bit, but that still might not be uh. Might not, the town might not want to include that in these minor modifications that we're drafting. Maybe it makes maybe it's more appropriate to address building setbacks, but uh affecting building height is a little more touching. So that's what we'll continue to consider as we go through these amendments. I gave you the references here in the new chapter one sixty D where they address these uh administrative minor modifications. There are all the language there. And I'm on page top of page three on my memo. Ultimately, the reason I gave those references to one sixty D. They describe my my minor modification was not statutorily defined. Uh so the town has flexibility to adopt reasonable regulations defining that phrase. So uh. We're going through that language, I give you the references to Wilmington's ordinance. And on page four, Leland's ordinance as well. That was uh included in the memo from the May meeting. And I made a point that those I mean, or those that text for both Wilmington and Leland only discusses modifications to a plan that's already approved. It doesn't really address modifications to um an application that the town has just received and hasn't done approved yet. So looking at addressing both of those scenarios. And then beyond that, also uh since the main meeting, we looked at the town of Kerry's ordinance. And uh they were just happened to be very similar to what was sort of envisioned at the last planning board meeting. Uh where they kind of addressed all those, all the different scenarios. So I gave their section three nineteen on minor modifications. The first subsection one, it's uh talks about minor modifications to development and zoning district standards. That entire section addresses what I was just talking about, applications prior to an approval. So they actually give in the table in the middle of the page, the exact example we've been talking about regarding building setback requirements. It's the fourth or so line down in that table where uh. That one line gives the planning director can modify up to fifteen percent. And then the next line down is also regarding building setback requirements. But that decision making bodies, the zoning board adjustment, and they can do anything more than fifteen percent.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
So are you saying that board of adjustment can do a minor modification themselves versus doing a variance?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna be the big question here, that's the way Kerry does it, that there are pros and cons to that approach, I'm gonna get into, so. Um and then just pointed out while we're on these pages, the next page gets into their section three nineteen two. Uh Chairman Blue called minor modifications to approve plans, plaques and plan development master plans. And that is the other scenario we're talking about where after an applicant has already have a has an approved project. What minor modifications can be done at that point? And that's similar to the language that we saw from Wilmington. That's what they're discussing. Let's flip us through, is there entire section on how to deal with all that stuff? So now I have the page six on my memo at the top. Um using the town Kerry's ordinance as a guide. And reviewing all the additional requirements of town. Came up with some proposed text amendments. And I lay out all the different categories here, it's very similar to what Kerry had. So that first section A is minor modifications to zoning district standards. That's before uh an approved project. And then B, minor modifications to approve the approvals. Which is I just after the project has already been approved, what minor modifications can be done? And uh dug into all the different scenarios that can play out with those two main categories. Think the best thing to do is to start flipping through article nine and actually look at the proposed text amendments that I've come up with. Knowing that they are a work in progress. So um.
I have one more question. So if the board of adjustment can do a minor modification instead of doing a variance. Then that goes, the applicant doesn't necessarily have to prove that they're special, they have a special circumstance. And where to get that and it's easier to to look their problem.
Yeah. Um yeah, again, there's pros and cons to that, so we dive into that in a minute. Uh page thirty of article nine is the existing section eight, which is currently tied with administrative variances. Uh so our proposed amendment is to change that section name to minor modifications. Just to mention it, one of the reasons for changing that is to avoid the word variance, to uh not confuse that issue, so. Um that's what most of that page thirty is showing, it's just called the sort of obvious changes that'll be made there due to that change. And then getting to the meat of the text amendments, the table that I put together, table nine one. On page thirty one of article nine. Uh brand new table, and this for a minute, it's the table that you saw on the town of Kerry's ordinance. And I've tried to consolidate it a bit more than they did, so for example, they had two separate lines for building setback requirements. Like you see there in the top of that table, that's just one section, but broken up into two different subsections in the decision making body. So either be the town manager uh could allow a modification up to fifteen percent versus the ten percent that's already in play. Uh or the board of adjustment can do up to fifty percent.
And why isn't you decide to go up to fifty percent? Like a big guy air?
For you, it's pretty much uh trying to find a happy medium. So for one thing, the town of Kerry had what more than fifteen percent, which could mean they could allow a zero foot setback. Which contemplating that, the town could go in that direction, but I don't know if the town wants to go in that direction. I probably wanna, not knowing who is going to be on the board of adjustment at any given time and surprise us, probably wise to at least set some of it. Uh the fifty percent is up for discussion though, as well as those.
So let me let me drop a question here, this is more for goodness we use. So, cause I know we talked about before the ten percent, you know, what what's the percentage? Just based on historical data that you've got, you know, the the bins and the town on the setback. Would a fifteen percent allowance cover most of the issues you bring into? The one doubt, I'm sure it's still unknown, because that's the most risky, where we had to have. Thirty, forty, five minutes discussion. If the house was just over the two percent. That's probably the time. It's gonna be in the senior applications. It's that close. That's why I suggested that you run the town's. So the bigger the town bill. It's the good percent. I just make sure we're a bit too far down. And. Yeah, that again, I think there's a lot of what the town Kerry did, and I was about to make sense in all these cases, so. Before I get to my main point, just a minor point based on what Mr. Miller just said. Uh in the variance that we had, they were discussing the difference over a foot. Main point, mainly, they're still gonna, you have to draw a line somewhere, but so. Just that being said. Sure, there will be circumstances that. Right, although provided it be a very, very low percentage. So the main thing, I think that's up for discussion is. So like Athena mentioned, the major pro in this approach and using the board of adjustment is that it avoids the need for variance. In those cases where things are running on the border. Uh the major con is this sets up a discretionary decision process. So that is something the town has historically avoided. I did discuss this with the town attorney, Mr. Blanchard. As far as he's aware, there's nothing that prevents the town from initially doing this approach. And it's my understanding that the reason the town is typically avoided that type of setup is lack of better term or political consideration, that is legal consideration. So. Uh this planning board is also the board of adjustment, so you'll be the one making these decisions. Makes people either happy or angry, so I think that's the the consideration we made, whether the. What would be? Acting as. Would it be, do they still have to consider all that evidence, finding the fact? My understanding is that they wouldn't need to be defining the facts and they wouldn't need to prove the hardship, you know, like it's five or six. The grounds for variance, because it's a it's a separate process.
Even in the test, we've.
If they went past them, yeah, they would then need search, their only other option would be to apply for variance. It's just I never said that board that had, which we always was always figuring out. Right, it is possible that board back. Yeah. Wasn't judicial, right, all that. And that's why I make that point of the town's typically historically avoided that kind of thing. I contemplated that as well, so I think it makes sense to have the board of adjustment do these minor modifications. Could also be playing board. They don't sound the same. And it's there's not a variance process, it's not gonna follow that same variance process of the board of justice following that. It's almost like another planning. Yeah. I don't have an issue with this. Change my mind, negative.
Legally. Lawyer.
Yeah. It does, it does still run. This this will still be. A development. Just like if someone had asked that. So I'm just questioning. Question. That's true. Right. So probably going, at least for now, quickly through the rest of this table, there's probably enough to discuss otherwise. But just give you a sense, the other things that we've added in addition to the building setback requirements. Before we go. Need to do some work, live it up. Think in better words, make sure there's a level of day. I think that's one of the reasons why we kept these for top control. So you know, this is what we're doing. Hey. Town grows and say bro, not just. What you see when you come to the town, it develops as an organization staff. The need, this is more about customer service and services. Already dealt with situations where. Setback discussion. I mean, it was it was necessary because of our our rules and regulations, we had to do that. But that was a tremendous waste of time for staff and the school to have to deal with that because it was very minor. It was minor capital, not a business capital capitalized. And and but we were, our hands were tied because of the way the ordinances were good.
And then it also costs your citizens or the other, must they get a person to represent them?
Right, and then the you know, the mental suffering, you know, sure they're trying to enjoy their property and, you know, and all this, and we're all like. Yeah, it's just, it's just, it's really a customer service and and operational improvement. And straight, it was the kind of way I'm I'm looking at this and just for breder, I mean, you could say it's not a. Motivated by politics, it's about making sure we're doing the right thing, delivering services and being um you know, and being having that integrity in the process. Go ahead.
And so the first seven or eight of these items here are all pulling from the table five one two. Zone and district dimensional requirements, you see that in my section reference and right in this column. Um so those not just the building setbacks like on the first line, but also things like minimum lot size for detached single family dwelling. And the block frontage, minimum lot width, et cetera. And then also the last four items are not in that table five one two, but. Also, I think it makes sense to add to this table, for example, height of fence or wall, I think it was something that Athena brought up as one of the news. Uh number of parking spaces that require an asphalt. A number of uh off-street required parking spaces and uh sign sizes. There are other things, I've been that long comment at the top right, those are all the things that I looked at in the ordinance that could possibly be added to this list. But uh the most obvious ones are included in the table, so.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Minimum building separation. That worries me on more fire. I don't know, we should be, if we, town manager allows, I don't know if we're right at, is to the separation, do you allow fifteen percent? You know, by thinking, also maybe the. This is for special fire proofing or something they don't know about, that's gonna be violated if I could. No, whatever, that just stands up to be concerning. Is that straight from Kerry, Kerry had that.
This tables, I would straight through the town's ordinance to. There might be. So it'll be twenty percent of, or sorry, fifteen percent of whatever. That particular zoning district requires.
Right. I know, they have firewalls, so. I'm I'm thinking of a second kind of galaxy.
And so. Fifteen percent of that would be three feet.
I see twenty.
I like side, that's a zero, in case it would be. And that's what I remember, twenty feet in all cases for prime. So fifteen percent would be three feet, and therefore we use it on seventeen feet.
Yeah, keep finding that, it's just.
That would be if we had the small lots in River Ridge and Wood Ridge that were small.
This issue gets a little complicated, that that would actually fall under article six, so.
Fire lots.
Yeah, fire lots record. And also, this issue is also a little bit complicated because in article six, it allows sheds, accessory structures to be five feet. Actually, I think zero for setback from that. Actually, I think zero for setback from the house.
I think Mr. Gordon retrieving our conversation we have with Mr. Swift was. How close property lines and setbacks, because we spent a lot of time discussing that. And I think what I remember, we made a happy meeting on that, so. Probably need to circle out and make sure.
Yeah, and to that point, but especially your side setbacks.
Because I think that's, I think that's where the road was.
On that minimal building separation, I do specifically refer to that table five one two. So the way I have it written is intended to just affect those primary buildings, whereas sheds and accessory structure that we used to one hundred and six. And then we just hit it a little bit in one of my comments here in that top line for building setback requirements. It might make sense, makes a longer table, maybe break that out into separate lines for a front yard setback, side yard setback. And maybe different percentages or requirements for those separate items, or maybe we just keep it all combined if you like that.
Lose lose the integrity of our form of actions then.
He expressed the same thoughts that I had when I was writing this table, so it was weighing the pros and cons.
I would just spend a little more time on that. Now I had a question about the number of parking spaces, I see your percentage is not fifteen, sixteen, thirty-two.
Yeah. Isn't solely based on, so it rounds up to a whole number based on the current requirements. If I did fifteen and thirty, it rounded up to a decimal number. So that's a lot to take in the table, so. Probably. Good intro and we move on from now.
How about your comment on the number required of off-street parking?
Yeah, and I even have to double check the exact wording in that. Parking requirements table, but what I'm getting at is that someone was only required to have twenty-three spaces, for example. They provided twenty-seven. The ordinance requires that any parking lot that has more than twenty-five spaces needs to be paved. But if they're only required to have twenty-three and they just want to build a bigger, slightly bigger parking lot, do they need to pay them? And so this minor modification kind of addresses that. Gives the town another opportunity to review that sort of gray area. It could also be addressed in the parking requirements article, but this line also sort of addresses it.
I think the spirit of that was the the off-street parking spaces was basically overflowed. Parking, not their primary parking lot, and that's why, you know, I pushed the comment that we. Alternate paving materials being not asphalt. Gravel, horse, permeable materials for our green. Personally, I don't, I don't, I don't think the intention was to have them paved.
But ordinance does say all parking facilities containing twenty-five and more spaces shall be paved with concrete or asphalt or alternate paving material. There's still that. Weird gray area, someone's only required to have twenty-three. They want to do a slightly bigger parking lot, either it's because of twenty-five. Yeah, so so. They have twenty-three and manager can approve of fifteen percent more that puts them for twenty-five. Yeah, another layer to consider as well.
Even ten percent. The ordinance reads, any, any lot in your twenty-five spaces.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't talk about required.
They chose to go over to makeup.
Yeah, that's the way the ordinance reads right now, so. But this line would allow.
Would change the wording.
Like onsite versus offsite.
I mean, that's what I, the way I am, is offsite.
Yeah, that's, there's several of these that are worth doing on. Flipping the page. There's several items here that's doing ones as well, but this gets at the other side. About the categories we're talking about, so section B, minor modifications to approve development approvals. So after an applicant already has an approved project, what minor modifications can we do? And that title is a little bit redundant, but that's just approved development approvals. That's because the phrase development approvals is specific to one sixty feet, so. Just making it clear that we're talking about this is after someone has an approved project. B one is similar to what the town. Already does, this minor modifications to develop approvals that were originally approved administratively. This language is not quite complete, minor changes which are not deemed as major changes by the town manager. May this per discretion be authorized by the town manager. And I think ultimately this is leading towards needing a definition for major changes. But it's clear what a minor change versus a major change is. And that would be similar to like the administrative variance that allows the setbacks to reduce by ten percent. And then B two is another subcategory approvals that were originally approved non-administratively. And there are two subcategories here, I and double I. The first one, minor modifications to major development, and major development is approved by the planning board. Things like apartment complexes and such. And then the other subcategory further down the page, minor modifications to special use permits. Those are reviewed by planning board and ultimately approved by the board commissioners. And so the reason I did these is two different subcategories is, and maybe the town wants to address these. Be allowed minor modifications differently and have different kabbios. In my comments, address a lot of those different kabbios, so. First, in that comment eight ten, the big question for this subsection is whether to just include modifications administratively. Or also to include modifications. That are board approved. So for example. Having. The maybe possibly having you seen on B two. A lot of subsections here, B two, I. Two by planning boards, add the three question marks there.
Yeah, I'm why. Minor change. I feel like if it's minor. Town manager should be able to just work with that. If it is meant to award, it's already been missed, missed page, I think.
Potentially, the, I framed this similarly to the previous table where I was trying to, the town manager stuff would be. The minor minor changes and then. Here, I mentioned, I specifically put planning board since the major development is originally approved by planning board. And I purposely didn't put, yeah, board of adjustment because it would.
Someone comes to get an application approved for a special use permit. That already means that they've had a special treatment, if you will, to get that permit. And now we've approved it, the board commissioner has approved it, and then they're saying, well, we need to make a change. And I think the cause of the nature of being special use permanent. And then we come back. Because in those situations, those are probably the ones, just like we had the crowd here last month that don't agree with it. And then. The plan gets changed and it's just approved without anybody going through the whole process again. Then you get back to that point of the integrity piece and not being open to that in the process, it's like.
I've been thinking like that, something like that to me is, that's major, but.
You see what I'm saying, though, they they had to take a little different path to get it approved. And it's like, okay, you got what you asked for, and then now, now you're gonna change it. Probably some unhappiness in the community. When you go that you got your special use permit, now they're giving you more, and you're not even including that in the process.
So.
And that's a definition for major changes kind of the play. That's how. Minor modifications to major development, either being by town manager, planning board, and then similarly, we're just sort of talking about it. The minor modifications to special use permits, I had it by. Town manager or board of commissioners, because it's board of commissioners that ultimately approves the special use permit. Again, these are minor modifications that we'll have to define. But that's why I chose those subcategories as I did. And another point to make in my second to last comment on this sheet, I'm getting at. You'll see in the minor modifications to major development by town manager, number three. They could reduce the front side rear setbacks by fifteen percent. I purposely didn't include that number three in the next subsection for minor modifications to special use permits by town manager. Not allowing the reduction of setbacks in that special use permit case, because that could lead to. Someone proposes something, gets approved by the board and swings around to the town manager and asks for. More setback and not having that integrity piece.
So and number three, it says by not more than ten percent, but it was fifteen percent.
That's why I said ten, I'll change, I meant to have fifteen here to match. That matches the table for prior to the group project. In my last comment here is, I sort of said it already, the minor modifications to a special use permit. I have board of commissioners as the other option besides town manager. I had considered putting planning board there, but since the commissioners does that special permit. Special use permit approval, that's what I have the commission there.
Does it need to go through?
The way this would work, but we still need to find, I'll have to go back and define minor changes versus major changes. But if it's a minor change, then no, if not, we'll do both. And I know for sure our major development. If it were a new project, it has to go through TRC first, so these minor modifications, if it is truly minor. Then it would not have to go through TRC again, that's the benefit of that. And I would agree like the extra building that asset store wanted to add. If they hadn't proposed that in their initial, it was truly a new proposed building now. Beyond that. Another one to consider, so we talked about these two sub subcategories, the minor modifications to major development. Also the special use permits, and then flip into page thirty-three. The third subsection. Minor modifications to variances, which. Probably gonna be more rare, but might need to consider this category as well.
Minor loss of variance is variance, right?
It gets confusing.
I got that in my point about special use permits and variances, basically it's a special use permit. What we have in the ordinance, and so it has to be. We go back through the process.
Yeah, my comment here was, it might be that the planning board does not desire to have minor modifications, any variances, in which case this section is needed. And that thing was a lot of the reason why I didn't try to flesh out the section.
Other, did Carrie?
Not that I recall.
Because once they rule on the variance, they're done, it's kind of feel like that's, and if the applicant feels like they're still invited to something.
Or apply for a new variance. So that's what I think is the logical approach there, just remove that potential section.
It's such a difficult process to do.
The rest of this is. So obvious changes, basic changes, administrative variance to minor modification. You mentioned a few things to take a closer look at. And I'll certainly be stewing on some of these items. So. I think. I'll plan to address a few things that we mentioned. Try and prove this a little bit, give you guys the time to. Think about it, consider it. Look at very similar version of this next year. So.
Say it's like you prefer. Such as she's very, but I would have experienced. Describe this. And so. I think so. Just like I said, it's different, um, trying to improve things up.
Just want to make sure we're gonna get something crossed up trying to simplify.
We want to treat it most. That would be my last comment, uh, as you're thinking about these things, trying to think of a way. To break it.
Yeah. Questions. This is the next thing. Well, I don't think you can say. Thank you all for watching today. There's only a few more, one you probably heard about. That's the one that you get the. Like eight, three, number three. Insolvent. Out or a. A conference of loyalty, or say for the board, maybe it should be a war. Go forward. Federation. Yours is very good variation. It like being British, yeah. But then solution, the way it works. It's a order that can get beaten, it might go. Well, the whole idea of this is that's quite an argument, but we do. Just put the on part in. Big. Just go forward with no commitment. Build, it's a project, anything else. It only allows D O T. Well. With all the numbers, facts, everything together. Nothing in there. Yet. Before. It's media. In a spread, maybe it's about. The problem would be if we wrote on the next one to go forward, I would say, I think we want to. The basic will sign, draw, and not resolve enough. If you say possibility, it was told a day fifty years. The happening to the bay, if we go through fifty six, we object, what you told, we have a sound. If it's rejected. You bring about making sense for one team. D O T right now, especially for the bigger projects. So. Now, if you want to look at it. We brought back up, and I think that this is. Like a department, that's what I think of. Of five, you were ten years. A year from your good bridge control. This unsolicited part does go through. Forward, or say, the good progress. Uh so. It's gonna be a lot of shit, you might, you don't have to be late, you know, you you can imagine. All over everywhere, and they want a lot of help.
Oh, they're gonna get it. I think you're gonna do.
We know the first part of it was gonna be negative, okay, well, they don't. You know, it gets up enough toll road outside of Charlotte. Roads up there. Which I just got a uh ticket from. Much that my vehicle was up there, and I was a dollar and eighteen cents, and they've been up there, I've been on toll roads a lot. Basically, four timely bills need for a trailer, and I don't have. So I call them up and get that straight away, the dogs will probably issue something on us a dollar and eighteen cents. Yeah. But if you in talking with, think about it, put it out in the public for some reason, uh, you know, the next month, we will make a decision where to go forward with it. And they've uh, we're a little bit of a struggle, I think majority of the board at least wants to take a look at it. And that don't mean we make any commitments to do anything, other than that D O T and then go forward and crunch the numbers and show us everything. So, uh, they will come around, D O T will, once we we pass it next month, agree that go forward with it, and uh. We pass it, um, public access, and we set up, and everybody's brought in, they looks at it. The D O T spearhead basically. Show. For y'all.
So, no. Where'd they got the money to build the ones we got?
Well, those come from D O T projects, and I'll tell you what's happened right now, the infrastructure within our state, just like our area here, the growth rate. Is so huge and so fast that the allocation of funds that we have, uh, for the the D O T is allocated. Uh, you take Raleigh, Durham, Greensburg, Charlotte, the bigger metropolitan areas. It's like that all up, we are not on the top priority of this, and we never have, we get here at Wilmington. We can get some of those funds, and a lot of the projects, we call the feds, got pushed back almost two years. Those huge projects that are having to be refunded now. Brought back up, a lot of them, uh, in the in the county, like bypassed the uh. Seventeen quarter and bypassed when Hamstead and all that area, all they had to regenerate. And there's a lot of these projects, even our small projects here, they were pushed back a year. And we've got others, we've got them kind of, we've got three projects that we've done this year right there, one thirty-three. And of course, everybody walked down.
Yes, uh.
But I don't get what I. If if we are, if Brunswick County is the fastest growing county in the state. Right, so, yeah, I mean, let me think, right, a rich system, you know.
But we might be growing, let's say, Wake County versus this, how many people in Wake County? Two hundred million. Or a million. Cause you look Durham, Raleigh, you look at the infrastructure, it's the uh failing, and all the people they had there. Even though we're at a fast growth rate from the fanciness of the state, but we're not there yet. So when that money is allocated, uh, they're still trying to play catch up to their huge metropolitan area just with their infrastructure. And uh so, uh, that's where you see toll roads coming through in those areas, and it's called it's only by blocks, and they have.
But don't they, you know, they see that. The movement has been a failed port because of the fact that. Partially, yeah, because we're a hundred miles from anything. But same time. Yeah.
You look at your options, you generate funds, build, things, except for the gas tax. Uh, individual taxes, a lot of the taxes can be raised. And I think some of them look at toll roads, uh, basic road pay for my feet that you. Uh, depends on uh how much that toll is. Uh, when you get it, and they worked out deal most time where you get a monthly pass or an annual pass that's cheaper, but it's still a problem. Every time you hit that road, you're gonna pay money. Uh, probably, thing with gas tax and everything, it's just kind of heat, you've got the funky gas, you're just bad with coal side. Uh, you, but when you when you buy that pass, that's gonna have to do, that's a separate, I would come out of your pocket. So, but I I, and I think most, all the people on the W N P board, at least the majority of them, at least want to take a look at it. Because we need that bridge, right now, there's an average sixty-two thousand cars a day that go across that bridge. In ten years, that's gonna be over ninety-five thousand. That's just projected, it'll be higher. The maintenance cost on the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge right now averages fifteen millions dollars a year, just to maintain it. It has a major problem, because of its age. Uh, they gonna tell what the cost will be, and you just think what happens if that bridge shuts down. But they're probably gonna get a little better. Uh, there's gonna be some long waiting. But we got some tough decisions to make, the people have. And one of my, uh, you know, concerns was that over here, we sitting on that board, they're only, uh, myself, the county. Leland and the vast that sit on that board. Where I rooted in this infrastructure. So, like, uh. I'm gonna say in some time, politics and uh. Stuff.
They would need some of plane's infrastructure, maybe.
That's what's going down the line, but. One thing about the bridge affects both sides tremendously.
Does.
And uh, something we need to look at, and I, my personal beliefs, and I won't wait another ten years just to look and see if we can build it. Or the D O T, or if the state was funding the D O T enough where that fund is there, they they can go forward with it. By that, by the time you get it built, then I won't be able to drive it on anyway, might be riding in a thing, uh, van or bus or. But, uh, at least, and then you know, you got the railroad line is coming also, that they're pushing hard. So they, uh, thank you, you can be looking at. And all this costs a lot of money. No. You know, like I said, I think the other bridge they want to put on the south up here, that thing had a price tag of a billion dollars. I think a rough estimate right now of the new bridge that they built is about three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty billion dollars. A lot less for big. But the hard hurdle to get over will be the people, it's not like that we're told. They got to buy a pay, or you got to drop cones in, drop something in every time you throw, get onto that road and go across that bridge. So, uh, but like I say, you should want to think about it, and put it out there, people you talk with. We want to discuss, uh, when we take our vote, and I have a feeling on the next W N P, we'll be very eager. Lot of conversation going on, but I do think they will go forward, at least to look at it.
We took into consideration the, what is it, nine different scenarios they had for rerouting the traffic in one forty across. Talking about ship and all, independence, and then bringing, and and it always winds up bringing everything back to this bridge.
Well, you got a man who fought against putting that bridge over there. They, they won't. They're too close to the development, uh, but it still don't involve toll. That billion dollar price tag, uh, D O T and state do not have the money. And they have to go pay for it, uh, you know, it's just gonna happen.
Huge right of ways coming to the other bridge, too.
In a way, like you said, the way our county's growing, they say they wait another five years, and they won't explore another road. How many developments you think we're gonna have there, the gulf of over here by that land, it's gonna be more of a headache trying to get the bridge across.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's gonna be a lot of concept about it, so the simplest way to do it. Is replace the existing bridge we have.
Okay.
And you had a, you had a, that's gonna be a little upset, because the part of project that can be fixed with this place. You're gonna have to buy a property, get it to move. They're not happy about some of that, because, you know, we're doing the same thing to them, it's gonna happen to some of our people over here. And they're a lot more densely populated in that area than we are over here. But I want to bring that forward to you, so it's gonna be hard, the high coming up next month, so. I'm sure all the W N P board members are getting their ears sore right now. On which way they're gonna vote. I have a feeling it's gonna, I, we're gonna push it forward, because of the, I think. I mean, they don't have all these numbers, and you got to keep that, well, how can you go out and tell the public how good it's gonna be or bad it's gonna be? And they build in the timeframe, the cost more, the total cost, and that's gonna be the big thing they want to, what is it gonna cost people to cross the street? So we do that, I'm, I just wanted to get that out there, we'll move on, but get y'all out of here too in a whole, uh, uh, next thing. I think most of you already know that D O T, uh, all the property has been deeded over to town. Everything's been signed in registers, I guess, registered deeds now. But we got the property. And we're also applying for grants. They will be, uh, it's in two phases, the first phase, you know, where the structure or building and holding yard is. We'll narrow thing probably about two inches outside of their fences. Everyone all the way around.
Just clarification, we're talking about the D O T.
Yeah, D O T property. On all of it down and on this side of the road also.
Okay.
So everything that's, all that property is around their fences. I pushed for hard, and I told I want one inch of fence back, but we don't. So now we don't.
Awesome.
Also, there will be an agreement and a contract that will be signed by D O T and town. On the rest of the property, uh, after built. Uh, they want it two phases, because it's a little more complicated on where they actually build it. And the other is for public use, the other side will make more commercial. There had to be two separate contracts, but the other contracts are already started. That's sure. And all that is, we signed commitment that we are gonna take over the property. Uh, possession. Into there.
When you say the other side, you're talking about both sides of the river.
Yeah, if you go in the back entrance up here, it's both sides of the river, not just river.
Okay.
And we took it all in, except for the physical structures of D O T sets.
Do you know where they're gonna move to eventually?
Uh, that's part of the progress in work. They do have an area they could go to, but they gonna be, uh, it's got, uh, let's say, some reason, politics going on. Uh, you know, it took a while, fraud then, we get them removed, of course, you got, remember Lance had a contract. Right. To take over all that property. And state property. Now, we have. We actually still do own chunk of it now. And we want the rest of it.
And that's so we complete the face two.
Yep.
From, so we can keep moving that.
Yeah.
Because the town has funds that's been allocated for that, we're just, uh, getting the property.
And you get it, and I like say, the main thing you always want are deeds in hand. Right now, we got the deed in hand, and then register deeds in our camp, and get on that thing, but.
There is the extension, uh, the. Boardwalk itself. Hard to face.
That's already, uh, in progress, we have worked.
I thought it worked.
And also, I think this thing probably put out by, you know, our new boat dock.
Well, I was gonna say Friday is groundbreaking, so.
Friday, Friday, one o'clock, for you y'all that want to be there, then D O T administrative building. I don't know who all show up, um, we're invited to build or down. I do have a committee from some of our legislators. I do have a committee from some of our legislators. Not that I would say it's election year next year, but I expect this to happen. But it's gonna be, there'll be, there'll be some people represented by it, if you say. Yeah.
You say the administrative.
Yeah. But that's a good day for our town. Uh, also, you know, we got two uh, pretty possible apartment complexes, possible, we don't want to say that exactly, get off, I. Um, and I think one possibly could be four hundred units, the other one three units. And the, uh, one, a lot of traffic. Uh, two, a pretty good, big size development. You know, a lot of y'all will look at, and I know that's coming up. Uh, and also, we're probably calling a modification on, uh, one of the projects that D O T has right here, one thirty-three. So, kind of, we're looking at that now, probably chat about it next, uh, last week. Things been working on it too, so. A lot of it really doesn't happen in this town. Basically, other than other big piece, it won't ring up tonight to actually hear something, so it can change the whole dynamics of this town very quick. Enough that it could double the size of the town, not only land, but your population.
So, why don't we got D O Ts here right now, let's try and get as much out of them.
We're working on it hard, uh, they are, they got the strength, they're, they're, they're gonna have it pretty tough. Money that they lost and trying to get all that money put back into their budget. Restart all these projects they have, uh, Chad and the D O T have worked with us, set. Thing I had a good rapport with them, uh, we worked with Chad real good, I talk to Chad a lot myself. Uh, our legislative people have some projects that we've got a good year in progress. Except it's not a lot. Oh, now, when things go up, it seems like our projects will get signed off on very quick. Uh, that's happened, let's say, the apartment, some of those, uh, possible apartments.
That land is, though, it's a potential, give you the month or soon. Which you talked about, the land, it doubling the size, because that's something in the next couple of months.
We're bonded real close, that could, you know. I mean, I can give you more definitely, but right now, it's in a, a very sensitive phase. And also involved, possibly, a little bit of a lot of money.
We find out like thirty days.
So, it will, I'll think we, I said, that could, but I think they probably could, two, three months.
But I knew you can't tell them.
There's this happening, if it, oh, it happened, y'all be working really hard. It'll be something I think y'all will, I think y'all like, probably. It'll be huge, and, uh, Lord help, everything's gonna happen. And like I say, double the size of our town. But this, uh, I keep my fingers crossed, wanting, but I really want that because I think it benefits the town available so much and puts us in a lot more prominent position, uh, to grow, and add a lot more staff and people, and, uh, we honestly brought that to start our own place, but. If, if that does happen, I probably will have some. But we got a lot of good things happening, but a lot of that's because of y'all. You know, uh, it's hard, and I think y'all noticing it everywhere, get people to step up, take positions like y'all in. I know they can't even get a murder place to hire somebody anymore. But when you do this, but what y'all do here in the town, and I try to tell some people. I don't care where you're big in Charlotte, or you're a small town like us. It's just as tough, just as hard for every project you've got. Uh, so, uh, we got, and right people, right places, just in the, these owners, and all this stuff driving us, ain't big room. And I've been on the engineer side myself before, I didn't like it then. For a time, I waited for it. I didn't engineer with A T and T, and I promise you, I ain't got much air to pull out, I'm gonna pull it out. When you sit down at that, at this, and you start trying to put all these pieces together, the numbers, the figures are drawing out all these pieces, this, that. I don't care if you do have a grab person to put it all together, you got to put the reasonable numbers there. Uh, I said, no, they don't like the ancient league, and so I'm gonna out. But what's happening in the town, I think, over all the years, we, you know, we've been in portage since seventy-seven. I've been here now, in the town for almost nine years. It's been slow going, and then we called for our issues, and our hands got tied up by our predecessor. It got tied up pretty bad, and it's been tough breaking out, we still, I didn't know for a long time that, uh, our town would sign an annexation agreement with Leland that hard titles for twenty years. If I knew it ahead of time, I found out when the law changed, I could have got it nullified. But I didn't know that then either, but we don't have much time left, so that's a good thing. But, uh, we did get also, you know, we got a local bill, uh, through the legislative body that I pushed through. He gave us exceptions on sideline annexation. So, we got that one through. Uh, we tried, we had to do more, try to help ourselves, to give us the ability. Now, somebody out that doesn't touch our C D N, but it's still state law. I think request to come into town, we'll pay, but we got the exception. But the things, we finally look at, we y'all self, we y'all look at this, and the staff can give me the ability, you know, to set our legislative standards, say, hey, I need this, I need that, if we're gonna grow, if this is gonna happen. It's what we need to do, instead of fighting with our neighbor. Uh, the fight with Leland, uh, has never come out good for us in the past. And the water sanitary district thing, I thought that's the first time I've been in court, didn't like his decision, but he gives everyone one. Exactly, and even turn Leland a hundred days period around, they think it's the greatest thing that ever happened, it's time to agree with Leland.
All of a sudden, they're getting out of war.
But the, the thing is, the reason we fought it is to support the people in our town that's safe, clean, water. And what actually be cheaper water prices, what the county's gonna be able to put out. And that's not their fault, it's just the growth expansion that the county has, but with us, instead of our co-bodies to go within this district. If we had a chance to get safe, clean, drink water, we wouldn't have to worry about contaminating, why not? There's nothing, just a little backup. So, now, hopefully, projection, I think, makes to go sometime right after first year, they'll be turned water off.
Oh, good.
If it doesn't fall behind, I think that's right, that's the thing. So, and you know, we've, uh, over the years, um, we've made some things happen now. And we've had a fight with Leland, but, you know, the first time, and to be honest with you, when I look back, the first time we stood up to Leland, we came out on top. And we didn't back down, and that's what happened with our town, a three-one, most towns got D N X out of the town. They fight, they won't work nobody. How do you feel if you're a developer, and this area is just starting to grow, and you got a town that owns everything Leland has right now, but more commissioners keep telling you no? You saw what happened, they went to R C Soul, R C Soul shot a legislative thing, put it in the legislative body, and that blew one away, it's a big chunk of it. Not only did they lose all that, then they turn around and signs over the dang annexation rights. They just kept giving, dang, time I walked in, I was sitting here, said, crap. Then I still made it one time, I said, why ain't you working on the park? And I'm proud of this, it's a camp. I called the chairman one time, uh, I said, sir, then pork back. Come on back and talk with you. Best asset we got is things, things, people notice. We talk about it, but all the people in this same camp, we love to go towards, we love to walk. Expand it, we expand, we, we grant, but we don't see that, things, we find out. Six, five, six, four, nine, pack, lots, those look long, load ride. These could be adding on to the quarter hundred, forty-four thousand. On back, if we think we moved it to. But if you do have a problem, if you mess up, that has to be stuck out there, you pull up tile. I'm just more afraid for. We'll be starting here, sure. So, it's not spreading, like with that, I'm seeing. Wait, you can add. Both the, the camp. Let's see. My tradition. Sitting here with this, just more, so. After that rule, regulations. But same time. We've got, uh, we'll see, you know, you know, you can play it like process, what you think, we change. That the lead, you know, it's definitely, it's a, it's a. These over here too, they're the most expensive, really, back that actually. I'm fitting, I think, roll, that, that, we. Reason will change, we consider to, if it's developed, it will not run. I won't say that, bro, but I don't want. I'm green, I'm going, I'm not a good way. I'm happy with the family, they, we're good, five thousand people, we didn't dig up. If you got the revenue support services for people to. That's good, ready to get in, the revenue stream will be there. Facts on property, you know, we're, I'm, I'm, so anyway, around here, you can talk to that. But if you get the right, the money, it's definitely. Get more staff, get more, do, serve, and all, not make. So. Tax will be about thirty-five million, huh? Last, turn it off.
So, it left the line too.
But, I hope y'all, everybody, what you, staff, the boards, everybody, what you, team, make this happen. Decisions y'all make, actually make myself, or just. My legal, you take y'all representation, see. See the time, like, when you come back, I see the time, I see the time to put into it, and what you're gonna do. Make it right, make it fair to people. And I have no complaints about, in my mission, I'm gonna take my representation. Do this for you. Very detailed. See, most of that will be your representation.
Appreciate that.
And if you have any questions, keep your eyes on about the bridge, next month, we hear you. If we do go forward with this project, we'll, probably, but at least, uh, to see. Oh, oh, bitch, well. And y'all know it's next.
I, you know, I would suggest any information, at least. Bridge scenarios, so. Push that information out. But, uh, says, can get it, uh, here, just to make it, please, so.
Record that, it's fast, routine. I think the unsolicited people, it's just up, they pay for it. They're trying. D O T, that's what. Oh, here. Very detailed. I'm glad. Make four, make, make three. My passion, your way, on track. I'm taking it every time.
That would actually extend from right inside.
You can go halfway out on the pier, there'll be a chunk taken out.
Cause the yacht clubs are lifting, so.
Uh, no, right there.
It's gone, okay.
So, if you walk out on the pier, on the right-hand side, there'll be a section taken out, and a ramp will go down to this, that'll be a hundred feet. There'll be a pack launch attached to it, it's good, and a next part down here, town frequency, center, that'd be handicap accessible. Then there'll be a motorized on the riverside, then non-motorized on the shore side. So, uh, it's gonna be nice, if you seen the actual pictures, uh, pretty good size, so. And it's mine for handicap people, well, uh, but it makes a lot easier, it's just y'all things before. Uh, but that can be attached, and you can put an L shape on it, and you can take it right on that. Yep. So, and that'll be, I hope, that'll be done before Christmas, that way before Christmas.
Is it something, when we get our, these hurricanes will come business, it can be removed?
Yeah, the way they talking, that's something we were asking about, hurricanes, you know, you know, the way it's designed to read, and put it the way it did, it flowed with the current.
Right.
Back and forth with those, um, I, I think there was a steel pole. And they, and piles are gonna always end up dead, right?
So, as long as it doesn't get, the tide, it can get above the height and pile them, it can stay in place.
The ones that are the nature part of the, these.
Yeah, these here, uh, be just like that here, it ain't going nowhere. But at least you'll have water on the continent.
Is there any progress on the path that's gonna be built?
Are you talking about? Would you like to talk to me?
I'm listening.
Yes. So, we submitted the six percent plans, all environmental documents now been done. Uh, got comments from the town, and it's D O T on the six percent still, revising those now, should have better percentage, al- almost complete plan is probably in the next couple of months, we should. There's a road control permit, we'll have to get, obviously, the D O T to kind of sign off on it. We have pretty far along.
Did you say sixty?
The sixty percent, so, the, the snows are set at thirty percent, sixty percent, and there's a ninety-five, I don't know if it's ninety or ninety-five, and then there's a big set, that's when we, to the contractors. Our next set is the ninety percent, we're at sixty right now, we got comments on those. And everything, comments made, or, there's nothing major about it, you know. The pad, as design is going, there's some minor shifts. The pad and ass design is what, there's some minor shifts. Y'all, you know the difference.
DOT, the other product from this pipeline down, that probably wasn't moved back two years, been reprioritized and moved back up, and a big work on this year. So, we got it pushed back up, and, uh. Takes a lot of phone calls and pounding.
Right on.
Things are looking good for the town right now, keep them going that way, uh, once we get all the issues solved with Leland, that's in progress too, I believe, with, uh. The mayor and the town manager, we're trying to work out all our issues, all along, and find some areas where we can work together. We're gonna get some bumps, I know it could go, we've been an adversary of worlds for so long, uh. Gonna take a lot of smooth things out, but, uh, but I'm worried about, just like what they're worried about with Leland, I'm worried about that, though. If it don't benefit our town, I don't make deals, I know that. And they also know that I'm not scared to take them on. But, uh, y'all just, I think there's anything else I need to touch on.
Um, I think that's pretty much, over all the bases.
Okay, I didn't want to miss anything, cause I took up too much of y'all's valuable time, but I wanted y'all to be updated. On everything that's going on, uh, there's gonna be something, big things, you can be there Friday at one, Tuesday, come down, support town. Where hopefully a lot of our local officials there, and, uh. But they need to keep that fun going. And keep them moving a little bit, and, uh, with the way funding and everything's happening right now, we're still in some tough times, COVID's created a long way ahead of it. Once you're fighting through that, uh, good thing is, what you told me, I think North Carolina now has about two billion dollar surplus. And on that, I have no clue how that two billion dollars, what they do with, but I know one thing, it ain't going the roads right now. I wish, I wish it was, think about the bridge, and you talk with the people around, but if, if we do look forward next month to get this out. Uh, I'm gonna be probably pretty fast on getting all this information out. Yeah, for, thank y'all again. Originally, it was designed to go to the old boat launch, was what we told before. Uh, you know, low tide, you can get in the water, uh, you know, what medicine is.
Narrows in there too.
So, there's nothing else now, at least you kayak people, uh, you rowboat people, and any motorized, uh, people, they won't pull up to a pier, come up to a park. Or they accidentally get stuck, cause there's no tide, they got a way, that means get off. Way for tide, so we wanna do that, still, I don't see us getting dredged. We're getting a lot of kickback from non-state with the fans of the big ones, they don't want us to touch them. Uh, the only place we can dredge is up where the DOT property is, only one reason, because it's been dredged before. But there's nothing there to worry about, when they go and dredge it out again. Looking for some big things happening.
Thank y'all, thank y'all so much. All right, so, there, any other, the, you stay up, later.
Offsite and commercial, uh, expanded and blood damage prevention. And also, but, um, everything that you helped us do in the last fiscal year, and ready to move on, scratch some other things.
Cool. Well, under this business, that says discussion on everybody, district, right, which is.
Um, Jeff, let's not get into the particular ones, but, um, I wanted to kind of introduce them a little bit, and just let you know that with these potential. Apartment complexes, um, they have some items that they are asking for our assistance for, in order to, um, improve some of the settings of the property. And so, they're hoping that you help us, that right now, we don't have the ability to do the, uh. On staff, but. With that, so we may be able to assist them, so, I think we have listed four items, um, that they've expressed that if they aren't able to. Get a little bit of latitude, decide, then they might consider it to be other, that would be very important.
Yeah, uh, so I'll go through there, as the mayor said, as long as it breaks. Uh, we got four items to discuss, um, I'm gonna skip the first one, cause I think it's the harder one to do, but in the meantime. sharing. Prep, designing that. Um, and, like, well, that would be helpful for that item, but we'll come back to that in a few minutes. Um, so I think everybody has a copy of Article seven in their packet. The first thing we'll talk about is.
Was outside. Was just hanging out.
Yeah, so. Worked that, uh, seven, so. First one is on page twenty-six. And this is, uh, section seven dot three is for the Blackwell Road over the district. Uh, and the first item we're talking about is on page twenty-six, section seven, three, six. It's the architectural standard section, subsection A dot two, garages. So this whole section seven, three, six deals with architectural standards, which I have always in, sort of interpreted to be. More geared at aesthetics for the Blackwell Road, over the district.
Different, just a second, I don't know.
Issues, but, oh, here we go.
It's seventeen.
Yeah. Where is that? Twenty-six.
Central, yeah.
Subsection. Page twenty-six. Got two more, but that's why. When they, when they, the copy already said. Yeah, page twenty-six. All right, they were called up, and, yeah. That, uh, section seven, three, six, subsection A two, garages. Is the section question, like I was saying, this whole section seven, three, six architectural standards is geared at. My interpretation here and aesthetics for the Blackwell Road over the district. The downtown of the district also has, uh, much more stringent standards, Blackwell Road over the district, by comparison, is much more, uh, much less stringent. So, uh, garages, what the current ordinance requires is that. For townhouses and multifamily dwellings, garage doors are not permitted by any front or side corner elevation. So if they're gonna provide garages. Uh, they, they can't be on the, the front of the house, or if they're on a corner lot, it's a side corner as well. So they've asked us to, uh, remove that requirement, like I said, I've always read these as aesthetic requirements, and. My personal opinion is, that particular requirement is not really gaining a whole lot in terms of aesthetics.